Good morning, I'm going to call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. Please stand for our indication and pledge.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, Creator of all people and of all things, open our hearts and minds to an awareness of your presence with us. Guide our wills to do your purpose, as we gather to make decisions that will make a difference in the life of this community. Over the eyes of the students here and everywhere, to appreciate the opportunity of public service, and for voting the best for all people, seeking liberty and justice for all, all for your honor and glory. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge...
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please over the roll, please.
Carrie Hodges, Ward 1. Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
And Taff Rin, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Meredith. We have got the honor and duty to swear in our Civic Youth Day officials this morning. And just a note before we do that, the way that we'll do this is, once we swear in the school board, folks, everybody who has something to do with the school board will be leaving us and going with the school board duties. I know Dr. Hinesley's in here somewhere. There he is, if you're out there grabbing a biscuit. So, before we do that, does everybody know, whether, just the basics, do you know if you're with the school system or if you're with the city council? Does anybody not know where they're supposed to be? You're on camera. So, everybody knows where they're supposed to be? All right, well then, I'll spare the list, and I will turn it over to Meredith to go ahead and call those sworn officials in to get them sworn in.
All right, those students who have been designated as elected officials will proceed to run for board and explain.
School board members and city council members, and mayor.
Good morning. So, please raise your right hand. You so solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Georgia, that you will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the City of Cartersville, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office this 21st day of September, so help you God. All right, congratulations to you all this morning. You made me seated, thank you.
All right, so just so everybody knows where they're supposed to be going, I've been told I probably need to do this anyway, just to be safe. School board members, the people that will be leaving us and going with Dr. Hinesley, include Reese Burdough, Ross Norwood, Matthew Slocum, is it Jemaya Jackson, Davis Edwards, Addison Nix, Walt Morris, Deuce Jones, and I believe those are all the city school board folks. So, if you are one of those people, enjoy your day with the school board, folks. We'll see you at lunch, and I'll give you all a minute to gather your things and vacate the premises. All right, I'll risk of butchering everybody else's name. Cassie Caden, you're with me, welcome aboard. I'll be smarter today because you're with me. Evans Toviave, did I say that right? Okay, you're gonna be, you'll be, no, I didn't, I butchered it. Nah, sorry buddy, I'll make it up to you later. Anna Matherne, Anna Chapman, Jacob Churchwell, Emily Miller, y'all, what's that? Y'all are with, y'all will be council members that will stay here. Finance directors, empty. Fire chief, is that Chase Willis? How bad I butchered your name? Go ahead, Tommy, is it Case? Case? Brittany told me it was Chase. But, there you go, throwing people under the bus. Ray King, where's Ray? You'll be matched up with him, let's see. Todd Williams, electric director, is Don Hasselbruck, he's right there behind you. Mason Andrews, you are with Bob Jones, Bob is right there row behind you. Carter Spivey, good morning Carter. Tommy Sanders is right there in the back corner of the room, he holds up both those walls every meeting. Juan Zizweta, you're gonna be with Mr. Lovell, I guess you'll be with us here in council chambers. City clerk Peyton Miller, you've already met or interfaced with Meredith. Elizabeth Woodall, you are with the police chief, Frank McCann, he's right behind you, he's looking at you very suspiciously. Anton Stetzenko, thank you, you're with Greg Anderson, recreation. Will Bentley, you're with Randy Manino, who's here in the front of the room. And Cameron Rhodes, you're with Dan Porta, and Dan's right there, and I think you'll be in with us probably as well. So, there, everybody's sworn in, and now we'll get to the business at hand for the city of Cartersville. First meeting, first order of business, did I leave somebody out?
Yeah, I'm sure I did.
Okay. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from September 7th. And council, you've had an opportunity to look these over well in advance of today, and check them for accuracy, and if there are any changes, now's the time to make them, and if not, a motion's in order. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved unanimously. We have a public hearing for an annexation and zoning this morning, it's case AZ 17-03. So, if you would, Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started off on that.
Thank you, mayor and council. As you noted, this is an annexation and zoning, and for the record, this property has been properly posted and advertised, and there appears to be no conflicts of interest. This application is for approximately 20 acres at the intersection of 411 and 20, with the newly completed relocation of 20 there. It does provide for additional opportunity, as you see, most of the area around it is already zoned general commercial. They're seeking to add this additional property on the northeast quadrant of that intersection. Again, it's approximately 20 acres, they're looking to do institutional use on the property. With that, the planning commission did hold a public hearing on this request, and with that, the planning commission did recommend approval of the annexation and the rezoning to the general commercial category.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manino at this point? Thank you, sir. I will open up a public hearing relative to the zoning portion of this request, case AZ 17-03. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the zoning portion of the application. I'll open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of case AZ 17-03. And again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close that public hearing. And again, council, we'll take this up for final consideration at our first meeting in October. Next item, Mr. Porta, if you'll get us started off with the creation of some festival zones.
Yes, mayor and council, you in pass have already approved festival zones for a number of opportunities. One's upcoming with Chamber BBQ, there's a family wedding's going to take place, and then also the Bluegrass Festival has been changed, the dates on there, so we want to get council approval for those three festival zones.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Porta on these items?
Dan, just one. Council member Step and I were talking, is this our first wedding, or do we typically have weddings down here?
This is the first one using a festival zone approval. They have had a wedding at Pavilion before, but I don't think they had served alcohol at that one.
Okay, that's the difference. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? If there are no other questions or discussion, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell, you have the next item, please.
Yes, I believe the next item is approval of agreements with Transco. As council may remember, last year, we entered into agreements with Transco to provide a second gas supply for the city of Cartersville. That requires a transfer station to be built out to the county. That was supposed to be built and in operation currently, as we speak. However, that has been delayed for some time period, so because of that, we need to modify our existing two services agreements with Transco for that. And in addition, we filed a complaint with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to have them also direct Transco to modify those agreements, and there's a settlement agreement in that matter which is related to this that will have to be approved. So, I'm asking y'all to approve two amendments to the two new service agreements and the settlement agreement with Transco.
And just to be clear, the upshot of that is...
It will save us around $500,000.
Yeah, they had initially wanted us to pay for gas as of August 1st, and the gas wasn't available. The station wasn't there. This delays it until June 2018, and we think that we can get out there and get it done.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or discussion? Not a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hill, you've got the next couple.
Good morning, mayor, members of the council. We have a kind of easement that we need to ask you to approve, that's with the PetSmart properties up here. This is unusual, but it's what we've got to do here, so just asking for your approval.
Okay, any questions or discussion?
And as we discussed, the gas lines already there, this just cleans that up a little bit.
That's correct, Sam.
It's probably prescriptive anyway.
Yes, it would be.
Okay.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Michael.
Well, we've gotten our tax bill from Floyd County for our properties and equipment up there. It comes to $789.23, just asking for y'all's approval.
Okay, thank you. Once again, questions, comments, or motions?
Mayor, just a question for the benefit of the students, why are we paying taxes in Floyd County?
It's out of our county.
We do business.
I know.
Yes, ma'am.
We have gas lines there.
I know that, I wanted...
We have gas lines, and that's where our take stations are. We have two major stations that provide gas to the city that are located there now.
So, and we have a line through another county?
Yes, ma'am.
And we have to pay taxes there? I wanted the students...
All utilities, wherever they are located within the state, have to pay taxes on their facilities located within that county. So, we have facilities in Floyd County, so we have to pay taxes on it.
I did know that. Mr. Tonsmire said you knew that. I did, it was for the students.
As a test.
It's a test. I didn't know if you knew it, Michael.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm waiting on a motion.
I have a move that we approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, mayor and council, this is for the construction of our Phase 2 recreational buildings. When we first started the process of our GO bond funds, the decision was made to do our buildings in two phases. We have done the Dillinger Park Phase 1, and now it's time for Phase 2. These buildings include the expansion of the women's restrooms at the Senior Aquatic Center, restroom facilities at Hicks Park, restroom facilities at the Cardinal Baseball Complex, Cardinal Sports Complex, and then the Aubrey Street Pool Bath House. Bids were taken, we had three bids that were returned, very competitive bids, the difference between the high bid and the low bid was only $34,000, but these numbers did exceed what we had budgeted. After negotiating with the apparent low bidder, I bring before you a negotiated bid price of $1,36495 from Womack Lewis &amp; Smith. All documentation was received, and I'm requesting the approval of this construction agreement, and that the mayor be able to sign any and all related documents.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
And that's the contractor that stood in the buildings at Dillinger, right?
That is correct. Womack Lewis &amp; Smith is a local contractor. Not all the subs are local, but the majority of them are local, the plumber, the framers, the concrete, all those are local, plus, plus others.
Will it have the same look?
Yes, we have basically the same design. I've got some pictures up here, this is the women's, except this one. This is the women's restroom expansion at the Senior Aquatic Center, and it will be just exactly like the existing building. This is the restroom facility that will go at the Hicks Park and at the Cardinal Sports Complex. This design was the same, same design as the back restroom at Dillinger Park.
Okay. If we could bring that into the other parks, the buildings, I make no secret about the back buildings at Dillinger, right?
Yes. And then we've got, we've got one more, the, this is the bath house for Aubrey Street Pool. We've got the columns on both the entrance, and then going into the splash pad and pool area.
Wonderful. All right, thank you. Again, any other questions or discussion? If there are none, okay.
I want a picture of that. Right.
Yes, sir.
If there are no other questions or discussion, then a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Greg, please.
Yes, sir, as part of this, as part of the Aubrey Street Pool, we are redoing the pool, creating a splash pad and a smaller pool. It will go on basically the same footprint of the existing pool. When we advertised our bids, we had three bidders at our pre-bid meeting, however, only one bid was returned, and after negotiating with them, I'm recommending the bid from Aquatic Design Systems in an amount of $406,302, requesting the city council to approve the mayor to sign this document and any and all related documents.
And how much above the anticipated budget was that?
For the pool, it exceeds our budget by $131,302.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions or discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, mayor and council. Stormwater needed to purchase some cast iron, manhole covers, rings, frames, and grates. We took quotes from three different companies, and the low bidder was US Foundry for a total of $5,146, and it's a budgeted item.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tommy. Mr. Jones.
Good morning, everyone. As we discussed in the work session, we need to purchase a replacement belt filter press feed pump. The current pump is 20-plus years old. We did look at options, we looked at rebuilding the current pump, that came in at about $18,000. We looked at replacing with a different brand or model of pump. Those options came in at $12,000. Or we can buy a direct replacement, brand-new, off-the-shelf pump, just like we have, for So, you have all those options, but I'll recommend the low-cost option from Carl Eric Johnson, and ask for your approval.
All right. Any discussion? Not a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, Bob. We do have one item to add to the agenda for the finance report. Chair asked council to allow that to happen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item is added.
Mayor, the item we are requesting y'all to consider is a resolution which will authorize the city attorney's office and the mayor and city clerk to file all the necessary paperwork to participate in a upcoming class action lawsuit. As y'all may recall, back in 2005, it came to the attention of the city and other cities in Georgia that various hotels were not paying their hotel motel tax as required by the state law because they were using these online companies to book their hotels, such as Expedia, Travelocity, and others. And we eventually prevailed in that matter and entered into a settlement agreement with all the parties, and have since been receiving our appropriate payments. It has come to our attention that there is a second generation of internet companies who may be involved in doing the same thing, and we're working with other cities to prepare class action in that. At this time, I would ask the council to approve the resolution. We're authorizing that so we can participate in it.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Lovell, on this item from council?
Keith, just one, is this a nationwide class action suit, or is it just Georgia?
It will just be for Georgia because hotel motel taxes are by state, it's not a national tax. So, now, the parties involved may actually be based in other states, but it will only affect hotels or similar types of entities that do business in the state of Georgia.
But that's not to say that Alabama's doing the same thing that Georgia's doing.
That is very correct. In 2005, we were one of, I think it was about 35 states that ended up filing similar class actions related to the ones when we did. Some were successful, some were not. It all depends on the statute that your particular state has adopted. And our state statute does allow us to collect taxes from internet providers.
Very good. Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Finance report, Mr. Reinhardt.
Honorable mayor, excuse me, honorable mayor and council, this morning we'll be looking at the financial report for July 2017 and comparing it to July 2016. In the general fund, revenues increased, which is a nice thing to say, I haven't said it in a while, by $27,000. Expenses have increased by $425,000, and we made an early payment for a fire truck, if you remember, back in July. Three areas of revenues that I look at on a monthly basis are local office and sales tax. We're actually at an increase right now at $15,000. Police fines and forfeitures were at a decrease of $12,000, and building permits and inspection fees were at a decrease of $10,000. In the water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last July by $47,000. Expenses increased by $401,000. This is due to increased personnel, increased operating, increased debt service expense, and increased capital expense. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last year by $245,000. Expenses increased by $62,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues decreased from last year by $631,000. Expenses decreased by $82,000. This is due mainly to decreased cost of purchase electricity. In the stormwater fund, revenues increased from last July by $3,000. Expenses increased by $9,000, and this is due to increased personnel expenses and increased operating expenses. Solid waste fund, revenues increased from July 2016 by $10,000, and expenses increased by $1,000, due mainly to increased personnel expenses and increased operating expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last July by $28,000. Expenses have increased by $92,000. This is due mainly to increased operating expenses and increased capital expenses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, make one comment, just one.
Some people have asked me a question over the last month or so, and I just wanted to, and I've answered it to them, but I thought I'd go ahead and address it in this forum. They asked if because of the police and fines and forfeitures on the actual numbers that we presented at council meeting show a decrease, does that mean the police are out there actually writing less tickets and things? And that is not the case. What that deals with is that is just strictly the collection of fines through the court. It doesn't have anything to do with the actual number of arrests or charges that the police are making out on the public streets.
As it dovetails to that, somewhat related, somewhat not, I think when some people think there's a perception that taking in money and fines and speeding tickets, whatnot, is a great source of revenue for the city.
Right.
I would think when you look at these numbers, it really isn't, that you can't operate the city that way, nor would you want to.
It's a very small portion of our overall budget.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or comments about the finance report?
The only thing I would add is the deficit in the general fund budget, you tend to see that this time of year, it's probably made a little larger by prepayment on the fire truck.
Yes.
That will trend that way until property tax comes in, and it'll correct. Electric will slow down a little bit as we head into cooler months. Of course, we like the cold months in February and March, because that boosts gas. And unrestricted cash is trending down a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Just one, mayor, building permits. I'm surprised to decrease in the building permits. Did we just have a spike a year ago, or?
I'd have to refer that to Randy if you need to do... Last year was Kroger and all that stuff.
Okay, is that the spike?
It has been a change in permit fee, so you're gonna see it trending to go back up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Is there any other business that needs to come before council today? Come on, Gregory.
Yes, mayor and council, this weekend, we're hosting one of the, one of our largest events at Sandsmith Park. The Atlanta Track Club will be there hosting the Wingfoot Classic. There's over 105 high schools and middle schools that'll take place there. There'll be between 5,000 and 7,000 runners, and it will be a very busy day. A lot of people visiting Cartersville, they'll be using parking areas all along Dalton Ferry Road, and anyway, it's just a, it's just a large event that people love to come to Cartersville and use our facilities.
What time?
The race, first race starts at 8:00, and they're scheduled all day long.
Do we do the phone call-out thing on that? It'll warn people of traffic, I'm sure that you're concerned.
Louis just wants to charge people 10 bucks a spot in his driveway.
So eliminate.
Louis, you going down on the prize this year?
Yeah. Thank you, Greg. Any other business? And Assistant Chief King, I'll put you on the spot. There's gonna be some siren testing going on, can you, do you mind coming up and just tell them?
Yes, we postponed last week because of the storm coming in for testing, and we might just put it down, so should we do a... There's a possibility today we're doing maintenance on our sirens, and they will do some testing. We should come out with a voice problem afterwards, so it's just a test.
All right, thank you. Very good, and it kind of dovetails into something I'll thank Mr. Lovell for putting back on my radar, but you know, we got the storms last week, we got rather fortunate in our community. I know that, I could tell you firsthand that the city was prepared for much worse than what we got. I'm not gonna complain about getting not as bad as a lot of other places have gotten it, but I was very, my appreciation goes to every single person with the city that had us prepared for the worst, and fortunately, we got, we got the best. But we also, in that, want to commend our electric department, fire personnel, and I think those are the main two departments, that once we got the all clear, we were able to send folks to those other areas that weren't as fortunate, that needed some help. So, I appreciate anybody that took time away from their family to go help those folks in need, and it's a source of pride for our community that we're out there helping other folks, because we know they do it for us. So, just wanted to make sure people knew that. Anything else from council? Does everybody know where they're supposed to go at the end of this? Because I don't. If you're a council member, if you're a council member, you'll stay in this room, or and city attorney, if, and then if you were a... or and city attorney. If, and then if you were assigned with one of the other folks, then you'll just match up with them, and we'll go about that. We'll be at lunch at the civic center at noon, I believe. Chair will turn a motion to adjourn.
So moved.